It works.
It works.
Do I need to wear it? Or it's okay there?
Wear it.
Wear it. Or speak into it, or...
Occasionally, we have a, um, some of our older members will let us know if the microphones aren't being properly used, they'll let us know.
Alright, so, uh, we all, as Jews, we all love, uh, you know, we all questions and rebuttals and arguments and discussion, so, um, we're all for it, this is gonna be somewhere, we're gonna discuss, the topic is hot topics of insider trading. From this discussion, we can, it leads out, branches out, it's a lot of other areas which we're gonna discuss, and the ethics, and the proper ways of money matters, basically, according to the Torah's view. So, the problem is, usually, when, uh, you know, when is it applicable to us? The problem is already in the midst of it, and there, it's very hard to take a step back and think of it in an unbiased way, and think of it, uh, you know, objectively, what it's supposed to be. So, through discussion now, maybe, you know, we're gonna, we, it can change maybe a little bit our perspective, and we can look at things a little bit differently before we get into the situation. That way, if the situation is that you're helping out a friend, you wanna advise someone, even yourself, a perspective, the Torah perspective on commerce, and on conducting ourselves properly. So, a few things we're gonna try to accomplish. Really, it's one, you know, it's only lesson one out of a long series, but it's, there's a lot in this series you can try to accomplish. We're gonna try to familiarize a little bit with the Jewish guidelines, and, you know, generally speaking, the Jewish guidelines were way around, Jewish guidelines in business and business practices are around way before the guidelines of any other societies. The Talmud, which, uh, it codifies, not codifies, it brings together all the discussions that they had, it was written, it was compiled fifteen hundred years ago. And what it does, it compiles all the discussions that they had had for hundreds and thousands of years before that, essentially since when Moses came down with the Talmud, you know, and it brings down stories and discussions, and back and forth, give and take, and that's the Talmud written fifteen hundred years ago, and in the Talmud, what we're gonna be discussing is all taken from the Talmud. And in the Talmud, you know, so, the Torah, the Torah is already discussing morals of business way before any other society was thinking of even regulating trade. And secondly, we'll also just see that the Torah really does discuss real-life situations. A lot of people like to think of the Torah as, you know, Ramu, nice lessons, you could read about in the Bible, the stories of the patriarchs, and it's nice, and we can draw lessons from it, but Torah doesn't get involved in nitty-gritty. Torah stays back there, and the truth is, it's not true. When you go through the Jewish law and go through the Talmud, Torah really discusses real-life situations. Obviously, it's not discussing insider trading, but it's discussing the principles, it sets up and establishes the principles, which from these principles, we can learn how the Torah, what the Torah's perspective is about insider trading. And moreover, we'll also see the logic that Torah uses, and the compassion that Torah has for the consumer, for his people, and that will be some discussion later. So, generally speaking, everyone has their point of view, and it's very hard to take a step back from your point of view, which everyone feels, mostly people feel emotionally about their views, and you'd see discussion, you know, now it's election season, so you discuss Romney, Obama, and everyone gets very heated up about it, and, you know, as soon as someone says something, you already see everyone is like reacting. That reaction comes because it's hard to put your, for everyone, it's hard to put our perspective and our understanding on the side and discuss it objectively, what is, what's he saying? So, that's what we're gonna have to try to do here, to put our stuff, our emotions on the side, and try to see the Torah's perspective on, uh, so, a little, so, you know, so, does the Torah hold of communism? Does the Torah hold of socialism? Does it hold of capitalism? So, a little of this, a little of that, how do you like that? Yeah, a little bit of everything. You can't say, Torah is not bound by the parameters of today's, what we, how we define the different Isms. Torah is written way before it, and we can, Torah has a little bit of this, a little bit of that, and we have to, we have to analyze and see what Torah has. So, in the beginning, we're starting from text A, then what we're gonna work is go around and start from Jacob, let's start with text A. Just like, before you even start, basically, when the basis of trade is that, obviously, it doesn't mean that, basic trade is, two people are making a deal, two people are gaining out of this deal, right? You don't have to gain at someone else's expense. We're both going in here, we're both, we're both gonna gain. That's a little bit different than you, I'm on page, for you, it's page two.
Okay, just wanna make sure I was in the right place.
Yeah, so...
Okay, commerce is not a zero-sum game. In a good exchange, both sides benefit, and the fact that the buyer wins doesn't mean the sellers lose. One fascinating expression of this approach is found in the laws of vows. The Mishnah states that if a person has vowed, perhaps in a fit of pique, I hope that's the right word, not obtaining any benefits from another person's, and he is forbidden both to sell and is also to buy from that person. The assumption is that in a normal transaction, both sides benefit. In the language of economics, in the language of economists, there is both consumer surplus and producer surplus. Dr. Rabbi Asher Meyer, Smart and Rich.
Right, so, the vows, meaning that if I can't derive any benefit from anyone, I can't buy from them, and I can't sell from them, meaning if I'm buying a pie or pizza for fifteen bucks, so, I'm gaining, I'm happy, I'm perfectly satisfied spending fifteen dollars on a pie or pizza, and he's perfectly satisfied selling me a pie or pizza for fifteen dollars. It's a win-win situation. There's no one gaining on anyone else's expense. So, that's, you know, ideally, how it's supposed to be. There is sometimes a situation where one side of the game is privy to information that the other side doesn't have, right? I know something about the product that you don't know. So, here, it's not really, it's not a full, it's not a fear, it's not a fear challenge, it's information ascitrical, it's called, right, ascitrical, that I know something that you don't know. So, that's what we call insider training, right?
Well, in the Torah, we're commanded to have an honest scale, and I was thinking about in Jewish business ethics, that turns the, you know, if you think about, well, what does that mean, having honesty among all things, and having the sense of weights, and you think, well, what does, you know, so, it looks like just one small line, but if you think about it, even, there's all of these ethical...
So, that's what we're gonna involve more detail in that very point, you're right. Honesty is what we're gonna be discussing here. So, insider trading hasn't always been a crime, right? And back in the day, they weren't regulating, they weren't regulating anything, then the crash of the stock market in 1929 led to Congress to pass the SEC and the Securities and Exchange Commission, which is created, and they were started overseeing different insider trading, and then in the sixties, it grew, it was, in the sixties, it grew, was when they actually started cracking down on insiders' trading a little more extensively. Recently, there's been some high-profile cases of this, right? We're all probably familiar with the Martha Stewart case. Case, you wanna read case study one, on page three.
December 2001, Martha Stewart's friend Sam Wosko, CEO of a biotech company called ImClone, learned that the FDA was going to reject ImClone's application for approval for its cancer drug, Eterbex. Wosko attempted to call his stockbroker Peter Bakunovic at Merrill Lynch, but Bakunovic was on vacation. However, Wosko did speak with Doug, I don't know, Fanelli, Bakunovic's assistant, and told him to sell Wosko's stock in ImClone. Following this stage, Fanelli called Bakunovic and explained the situation. Bakunovic also served as Stewart's broker, told Fanelli to call Stewart and give her the story. Fanelli spoke with Stewart, telling her that he thought ImClone's share was going to drop out because Wosko was trying to cash out. Upon learning this, Stewart decided to sell all 3,928 of her shares in ImClone, giving this order on December 27th, 2001. This sale occurred one day prior to the announcement concerning Eterbex's rejection. Can you keep going?
Yeah, so, obviously, then, when they announced, the FDA announced it, it, she would've lost, if she hadn't sold, she would've lost forty-six thousand dollars, right? And instead, it was divided into different buyers, much smaller amount of buyers, that they bought her stock, they were the ones that ended up losing the money. So, the question for discussion is, were Martha Stewart's actions wrong? Were they ethically wrong? If so, why? If not, how would you defend her against these charges? Any...
So, to begin with, is it always, this doesn't sound like a win-win situation, though, like for the previous...
Right.
So, there are, in this game, in this, in this, the rules, in the stock market, you don't have this mutual benefit to all necessarily, right?
So, I guess in a way, you sort of found out that you're...
So, no one should, should be, um...
So, basically, what you're saying is that even a kindergarten kid can understand that it's not fair, it's not, it's not a fair game. When I know something that you don't know, it's not fair. It's a basic child instinct that we, that some people will try to cover it over when they get a little bit older, more sophisticated, but if anyone's instinct, basic instinct is, that if I know something you don't know, then it's not a fair game, it's not, it's not fair. I might argue that also, you can say that if the stock market isn't regulated in any way, then people will lose their trust in it. People don't know that what they're buying is really fake, then people will lose faith, and the stock market can drop because of that. You know, a lot of, there are a lot of discussion about this. It's not, it's not non-controversial. Text two, which is very complicated and a lot of fancy words in there, but basically, Stephen M. Bainbridge says that, he's arguing that, no, we shouldn't regulate, we should deregulate the market, and then say that, let it be a fair market, and anyone who wants can do what you want. This will favor, obviously, the professionals and managers, that they know what's going on, it's gonna favor them. Investors will lose out, those people who, regular people sitting at home on their computer, and they, all they know is that you press that button, that button, and then you make some money, they're gonna be the ones losing out. But, why should they lose? Why, you know, either they're gained or they gained, so why? We can argue. What does the Torah say about this? Right? So, that's what we're trying to say, what does the Jewish law say about this? First of all, it's very simple. Jewish law says that the law of the land is the law which we must obey. In Hebrew law, in Hebrew words, it's called dina de mahkuta dina, the law of the land is the law, we have to obey it, unequivocal. Except, there are, there's one exception, if it goes specifically contrary to a Jewish law. For example, when prohibition was around, which it wasn't even contrary to the law, because they had an exception for ritual wine drinking, whatever they call it, and so, we can make kiddish on Friday night, but as a rule, dina de mahkuta, dina, the law, the land is the law, and there's nothing to discuss about, there's nothing to talk about, it's illegal, because it's illegal. It's wrong, and it's immoral. Question would be, what happens if there would be no American law? So, we're gonna try to discuss, find the Torah's principle, how the Torah can apply to insider trading, and from there, we are obviously gonna discuss a lot of laws about trading and morals about trading from the Torah. So, let's start with case, on page five, case study two.
Suppose that an honest man wants to sell a house because of certain defects, of which he alone is aware. The building is supposed to be quite healthy, but is in fact insanitary, and he is aware that it is. Or the place is badly built and is falling down, but nobody knows this except the owner. Suppose he does not disclose these facts to purchasers, and sells the house for much more than he expected, as he behaved unfairly and dishonestly. Certainly, he has, as antipater at Athens, not to set a man right when he has lost his way is penalized by general, um...
Excration.
Excration, and it is not precisely the same thing to let a purchaser make a mistake and ruin himself with heavy losses. That is even worse than not showing a man the way, since in this case, the purchaser is being deliberately misled. But he did not force you to buy, did he? Objects, diadines? He did not even ask you to. He offered for sale something he did not, he offered for sale something he did not want. He bought something that you wanted. But when the purchaser can exercise his own judgment, what fraud can there be on the part of the seller? It would truly be exceptionally stupid of the seller to enumerate the defects of what he is selling, in the height of his observancy for the auctioneer to proclaim at the owner's request, an insanity house for sale.
This is from Cicero, you know, the great, the great Roman philosopher Cicero. So, basically, in a case of a house which he's discussing, we all, if you've bought a house, I'm sure my parents, when they bought their house, sent in a team to check for termites, termites, are there termites in the walls? Now, why do you have to send in the, why do you have to send in the team? Maybe it should be morally wrong for the guy selling the house to say, you know, my house has termites in it. In ideal role, that probably would be wrong. So, that's, so, that's the question. And Antipater, Antipater is one of the students of the Diogenes, as he's called, and they're Greek philosophers, and he said that, yeah, you do have to, you have to be very, full disclosure, you have to say every fault that's in the house. Person selling a car, the heater doesn't, doesn't work too well, maybe the horn, you have to push really hard to get it to work. Selling a couch, and you know that the pillows aren't, aren't comfortable. Selling a stove, you know that the knob doesn't work, you know that one of the pipes are broken, right? We're selling something secondhand, and you know something that there's a slight defect in this that the other person doesn't know. So, it can be in all, across the boards, it could be, say, selling your iPod, you're selling your phone, you're selling, you're selling a house, you're selling a car, it could be from big to small, you know something that's defective about this product that you're trying to hide from, you're not trying to hide, you wanna know if you can hide it from the person, you're selling it on eBay, and you wanna know if, do I have to write on eBay that it's wrong, or do I have to write on Craigslist that it's wrong? So, that's, so, Antipater says, yeah, you need, full disclosure is necessary. Diogenes says, why? It would be stupid to say that it's a, it's a broken product, that would be foolish. Boy, if you're trying to sell it, so sell it, I'm not forcing him to buy, I'm offering it for sale. He wants to buy, let him buy, he doesn't wanna buy, don't buy. So, who's, who has a more compelling argument?
There's a balance there, you can switch it around also, you know, there may be some value in the house that the buyer doesn't appreciate it, and so, should the seller tell about the extra value of the house in setting the price?
Good point.
Where do you, where do you stop? I mean, I guess, you wanna, you do what's reasonable, your best estimate, as if perhaps you were the buyer, to express and disclose the value of the positive and negative aspects of the house, right?
Yeah, good point, that it's a two-way deal. What happens if the buyer knows something that the seller doesn't have?
Yeah, should he disclose?
Should he disclose?
You have, you know, it's a rare component in the house that, you know, you can make a lot of money.
I was thinking about, if you go to a garage sale, and you find someone...
Exactly, garage sale, in the garage, there's a rare item there.
There's some baseball card that you realize, they're selling it for a quarter, and it's worth hundreds of dollars.
I guess the principle is, to share the information...
So, that's the question, do you have to, do you have to, or do you not have to?
I think you probably should, you should, yes, you should.
The biggest irony about the stock deal with Martha Stewart is, the stock went down because the drug that they were developing was rejected a couple of years later.
It may go well.
No, they proved it, and so, the stock, the stock was doing okay, and then it was gonna get rejected, and then it got approved, and it went back up. So, had she not only, had she not, would she not lose money, but she would've, you know, all of this could've been avoided, but you'd never know.
You never know. She thought she was gaining money.
Right.
Anyway, so, but Diogenes has a point, there's a saying in Yiddish saying, which basically translates to, you're not allowed to lie, but you don't have to say the full truth either, right? So, yeah, he's saying that, no, we shouldn't have to say everything. I'm not, if he asks me, are there termites, I'm not gonna lie. I'm a straight-up person, I'm not gonna lie. But do I have to tell him they're termites? Do I have to tell him that the horn doesn't work? So, well, we'll see, what does Jewish law say about this? The Rambam, the Rabbi Moshe Ben Myman, the Rambam was one of the first to codify Jewish law from the Talmud, took it and write it into laws, one law after the next, and we're gonna read a passage from Rambam, text 3A.
Okay. A person is forbidden to act in a smooth-tongued and luring manner, saying one thing outwardly and thinking otherwise in one's heart. It is forbidden to deceive people. One should not press a colleague to share a meal when one knows that the colleague will not accept the invitation, nor should one press presence upon a colleague knowing that the colleague would not accept them. The same applies to all matters of this sort.
Right. So, it's not, we all know that Jewish law says, one of the ten commandments, don't steal. That's a given. Rambam's taken a big step further. Rambam's saying that we're not allowed to even get for ourselves an undeserved, a positive impression, we're not allowed to make one for ourselves. If you know that cousin in Australia that I really don't want coming to my wedding, but it doesn't hurt to send him an invitation, because he's not gonna be coming anyways, that's wrong. That's genevad-dat is the Hebrew word, is genevada, stilling of the mind, deception. You're making believe that you like him, but really, you know that he's not coming. The example he gives, you say, please, come for supper, or we have some food, it's, come, we'll chill, we'll have a beer, well, you know, you don't want us to come, it's wrong, it's deception. You're trying to create an undeserved positive impression, it's wrong. This is not, this is not in monetary matters, this also applies, but this example is not, is not pertaining to monetary matters, but it does also apply to monetary matters. Let's see text 3B.
It's forbidden to trick people in commerce or to deceive them. For example, if merchandise is blemished, one must inform the customer. Likewise, one should not sell a Gentile non-kosher meat as if it were kosher.
And what's a Gentile eating kosher meat for? Thinks it's a little salty, or thinks maybe it tastes a little bit better, it's healthier, we don't use certain animals, which is true, we don't use certain animals, but...
But it's also, back in the day, this is before, when the kosher meat certification was the only real quality supervision in town, so...
It means that the animal wasn't half-dead before you killed it, right? So, yeah, so, he wants, but even if it's invalid reasons, if the Gentile says, I want kosher meat, and you sold them non-kosher meat, but he doesn't know the difference, it's the same, same, same piece of steak. So, it's wrong, it's prohibited. Why? Because it's deception. In other words, this law, genevad-dat deception, prohibits knowingly and on purpose going and selling someone a product which you know that has a defect in it, has a fault in it, knowingly going ahead and selling it, even though there's that fault in it, there's that defect in it, is wrong, is prohibited on the grounds of genevad-dat deception.
Spell it real quick.
Geneva, I think...
G E N E B A D A T?
Look at page eight.
Okay, great, 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 sorry.
Even though the, you know, he may be right, the selling a Gentile non-kosher meat, let's say you explain to the Gentile that the, um, the value, that there's no, oh, no, okay, I'm trying to say, let's say you can convince the Gentile that there's no extra value in the kosher meat over the non-kosher meat, right? So, if you perform that action, okay, that there would be no harm, realistic harm, it's only the impression that the Gentile has, okay? So, this seems like, you know, in a lot of Judaism, the emphasis is on the action, okay? The end result in gain, you know?
End result in gain.
End result in gain, and in a lot of Jewish law, it doesn't matter what you think along the way, the bottom lies in that gain, right? So, this seems a little inconsistent with typical Jewish law.
And a lot of things in Jewish law that are, there are two kinds of laws in Jewish law, there's laws between man and God, and laws between man and man. So, it could be, well, maybe the difference would be, the laws between man and God, God said, eat the matzah on Pesach. So, it doesn't matter what his, what he had in mind when eating the matzah, if he ate the matzah, he ate it even if he had the best intentions, then he ate it the day before Pesach and didn't eat it on Pesach, then he didn't do it, but, and when dealing with each other, there's also feelings involved. So, it could be that in that kind of situation, even though he didn't actually, there was no, like, there was no monetary, or there was no actual...
I see, you're saying that there is value to the feeling, though, that, so, you're saying there, in reality, there isn't such a thing as assigning, there are, there is value to feelings, so, you can interpret it then, in, making, trying to make a win-win situation, and when considering that, you consider the feelings of the...
Right, that also seems to be what My Moni said about not, you know, you're inviting someone for a meal, you know they're not gonna take the, take you on a...
So, it doesn't matter, right?
He's gonna lose anything, but you're making him, now, he thinks that, oh, he thinks you're his good buddy, and you're not the best of buddies.
So, you're assigning value to the feelings, so...
But more than just the feeling, this is also actually deception, right? It's a real deception, because even though there, between me and you, there's no difference. Now, with the FDA approving this food, and it either passes the FDA or doesn't, so, there's no difference between kosher meat and non-kosher meat, but he feels that it's better to have kosher meat, and there's a real live defect in the, in the, in the non-kosher meat.
Yeah.
Can I ask you a question?
That's inconsistent.
For the deception, but, and you're not supposed to deceive people, but what about if, like, this is not monetary, but I have a question, like, what if someone had bad parents, and they were like mean to him as kids, and he grew up not loving him, so his parents would always say, I love you, but he wanted to honor his mother and father, so, does he say, I love you back for their feelings?
Is that deception?
Is that deception? Do you understand what I'm saying?
So, I would say that you probably do need a more real, like, more open dialogue and explain, if someone's upset at their parents, then you probably have to, you know, sit down and have a discussion and deal it out, and just being politically correct and saying, I love you, and then, we know it's fake, might not be the best way to go about it.
So, instead of, you would be better to be honest?
No white lies.
You're saying, no white lies? Aren't the principles about white lies, right?
I'm not, I'm not saying that you have to be white, there are some times where even Jewish law says you're allowed to lie in order to make sure that we shouldn't fight.
Like wedding, like the bride, you always, that's one case, right?
Right, by the bride, where you're allowed, you're allowed to tell the groom, your wife is so beautiful, and she looks stunning, and she's, she's an amazing girl.
You're supposed to say that.
And you're supposed to say that, right? And that's the way they praise the girl by the wedding. So, yeah, there are times where we don't have to stress our disagreements, we don't have to stress our differences, we do, we should try to stress the things which we agree on, but if, in a general relationship, I would say that shouldn't, the general relationship shouldn't be based on fakeness, shouldn't be based on falseness, it should be based, it should be more of a straight-up relationship. That doesn't mean that a person should, if a person felt his parents were wrong to him, they wronged him as a kid, so they say, okay, no, I hate them, and I'm not gonna talk to them, that's also wrong. A person should try to get along with his parents, but I don't think that trying to get along with his parents should be in a way of deception, it should be a real getting along with them, and if someone, I think in general, if the person has a disagreement with someone else, the best thing is to discuss it with them, you know, and to say that, I think you're wrong there. Obviously, if they're not interested in discussing, so then, right, every situation has to be judged separately, but generally speaking, I think that deception, yeah, deception is wrong.
So, I'm hearing, it's really, the use of this, we're addressing the use of deception to gain a competitive advantage during a transaction, you know, it's a process.
Right.
Transaction, you know, there has to be a meeting of minds, an understanding, what exactly are you trading, and discussing, what, how do I benefit? And you benefit, and ideas to, part of the rule of that, the Jewish, I guess, the Jewish law, what consists with Jewish law, is open disclosure of, what, a reasonable amount of disclosure.
Right. Yep, you got it right, on the head, nail on the head, that, fine. So, that's the first, that's the first law. That, fine. So, so that's the first, uh, that's the first, uh, law. It, it takes on, uh, it goes a little, a step further. There's gonna be a, 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 the law of mekach tot. It's also on page eight, you can find it. Mekach tot means a mistaken purchase.
Yeah, that's nothing certain.
Nothing certain. So, so while mekach, while, while, uh, while, while genevadas is referring to the mind, what's, is, is it right or is it wrong? And it's wrong to go ahead and deceive, for the seller to deceive. Mekach tot is more referring to the sale, to the object of sale. What is, what, what was sold? And it reads text 3C on page seven.
Done with intent.
So, so whenever, I'll read it. "When a person sells a colleague real estate or movable property, if there's a defect in the property of which the purchaser was not aware, it may be returned, even though several years have passed, for the transaction was included under erroneous premises." Right? If someone, I thought I was getting A, and I got B, then it can be returned. Why? Because this, the, the, the sale is null and void. If I thought I was getting A and I got B, then it's, I, I didn't buy what I bought. I didn't buy this, you gave me this, but it's not what I bought. And therefore, the sale is null, null and void, right? The above applies, provided the buyer did not use the purchased article after discovering the blemish. If however was used after the blemish was discovered, the buyer forfeits the right to retract and may not return his article. So that's, this is also from the Rambam. So let's contrast these two principles on, uh, figure one. So genevadat is, translation is, is theft of the mind or deception. The object of principle is the intent of the seller. What's included? Any action with intent to deceive. It's the action that's the problem. Mekach tot is the mistaken sale, the object of principle is the nature of the sale. And what's included? Any sale in which there isn't complete knowledge, even without intent to deceive. So, for example, if I'm a secondhand seller, I bought a, a, a case of iPods, and, from, from Apple, and now I'm gonna sell them for, for a profit of fifty dollars apiece, and I sell an iPod, and it comes back, someone comes back with the iPod, it's broken. So without any laws of warranty. Let's say it was sold without a warranty. Can, there, there's a problem in the iPod that it can't load music on it. iTunes is broken, whatever the problem is. So was there a genevadat? Did I try to deceive him?
No.
No, there was no, there's, there's no deception. I was straight up, I got this from Apple, and I'm selling it to you. Is it a mekach tot?
Yes.
Yes, it's a mekach tot?
The original intent.
It has nothing to do with the original intent. I, I, what did you wanna buy? You wanted to buy a working Apple that you could, a working iPod that you can use? Is that what I sold you? No, you tried to buy object A, I sold you object B. Not knowingly, I didn't mean to, to harm you, I wanted to sell you, I wanted to do you good. But if I tried, if you wanted to buy A, I sold you B, then it's null and void. Ten years later, you can come back and tell me, it's not what I bought.
What I was sort of thinking about when you were reading this, is this sort of sounds like the original lemon law applying to, uh, used cars. So like, so say you buy a car, and you're buying it summer, and you find, you don't find out until months later that the heater works. And, um, you know, but if you go several years for driving the car, and then say, before you go back to the dealer, and say, hey, I wanna, like, you know, the heater doesn't work, and it's like meanwhile, you've got five years of wear and tear on the car, it doesn't have the same, uh, value or repair. So I, I guess, the, um, that actually makes it, it good, so there, there is a responsibility to try and to do it, but if, if, it, it's, it's about trying to balance the level of power between the level of buyer and the seller, right?
So if the case is only the heater, then, and the value of the car actually did go down, but the heat, but the problem was only the heater, so then you'll have to, like he says, he says at the end, it's only if, if, if he didn't know, if he never discovered it. If he used it after it was discovered, so then you're right, then, then he has no claim. But if he only discovered it five years later, then, then the seller will have to fix. He won't have to make, give him a new car, but he'll have to fix the, the heater.
I guess more like a couple months after, for that.
Right, that would, that would be the norm of when, when he would discover it. So based on this law of, of deceptions and mistaken sales, how would the Jewish law rule in the case of the defective house? That's the question for discussion.
If he knew it was defective, he should have disclosed the defects. If he didn't, he didn't know of the defects and found out later, the na- due to the nature of the sale, it was defective, then, then again, you can reevaluate the, the value of the house.
So it's bang, bang, it's a problem, yeah, it's, both of them are applicable. If, if, if he was trying to, the, the case that, that he knew that there are termites in the house, he knew that, that the heater doesn't work in the car, and he was going to, gonna go ahead and sell it anyways, so then that's, that's open deception, that's wrong, it's prohibited. What happens if he went ahead and sold it? Even if he didn't know that there was a problem, the sale would be null and void. Because he, it's, the, the object is not as advertised. He advertised as this, he sold that, then the sale will be null and void.
There is responsibility for the purchaser also, if he didn't have a home inspection, if he didn't take it, the car to the mechanic.
Yeah, it isn't a burden on both of them, it isn't a burden on both of them.
And if, well, if he did get an inspection, the inspector lists the stuff.
Then that's the second.
He's a moron. But, uh, so, it, it's, the burden, if he knows about the problem, then he has to go ahead and disclose it. If, if he doesn't know the problem, then, then, then you're, then you're right. Then, then the purchaser should make some investigations into the car he's buying. Should some, make some investigations into the stove he's buying. And, uh, but on the other hand, if, if he sold him a lemon, if he, if he sold him something that doesn't work, then, then, then it still would, would have been a mistaken sale. So even though there was no malicious intent, he didn't do, he didn't mean to do any wrong, any harm. If there was harm that came about, then, then, then the sale is null and void.
Probably in a case of selling, let's say, a used car, where it's understood that there may be problems, there may not be problems, so if it turns out that a couple months later, there was a problem that he found out about, it's not, it's not necessarily considered that the object he bought, that the object that was sold to him wasn't what he intended to buy, because who knows, there may be problems that come up. Which is probably, it's more like a situation where there's something that's not expected. For example, you're, when, when buying a car, it's expected that the, that the heating works unless, unless he said so. You know, maybe that, the, that, I don't know, the windshield wipers will smudge a little bit, that's, you know, that's, and that's not something that's like, changes the object.
With cars, uh, no warranty sold as is. Buyer has responsibility to have the car checked out.
Definitely, definitely, and it would only make sense to. But what, 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 you know, the seller's responsibility is only what was wrong with the car while he sold it. And that, if he, if he sold him a lemon, then the sale is null and void. So the halacha, what?
But if like pistons had cracks in the car, is, is, is not long for the world, and then, then that would, I don't, I don't know, I guess that comes down to you're, you're making a, a... Well, I don't know, and, and again, it's like, we're, we're talking about moral laws, but then again, it's also set up where there, there's also a law of the land, so, so which, which do you, do you take?
So we're not, we're-
We're not talking about law.
Right.
Just talking, it's only law, there is, okay?
We're rewriting the law.
I mean, it's tough, because like, you, you know, people's, your perception of a used car is different than my perception of a used car. Right? You may think, if I go to a used car lot, there's a good probability that, that I have a broken piston, and I'm willing to take that chance.
There's a big, big difference between what is legal and what is ethical.
Well, and, and so that's a reasonable transaction. And, and, and probably, if I'm a, a used car owner, I'd say, look, you know, there's a chance. You realize there's a risk, because these are not, you know, these are not brand-new cars. There's a risk that it may not run perfectly, right?
Right.
In that, in that case.
And that, so we're gonna discuss that later. It's called kaviah amtore, right? So, so we'll, we'll discuss that later.
Heard that a lot enough.
As is, so, there, there is some room to that, yes. But if, one more, one more time, we'll just conclude with this.
The, the key is everyone should understand the nature of the transics, transaction.
Right. And, 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 and the, 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 you know, the chidush, the, the, what's, what's unique about this, is that even if you didn't know, even if the buyer didn't know that there's something wrong, it's like a built-in warranty. If the buyer, even the buyer didn't know that there's something wrong, and he didn't mean to, to wrong this, the, the seller didn't know there's something wrong, and he didn't mean to wrong the buyer, it would still be, the sale would still be null and void, right? So it's a totally, totally separate problem, or two problems. There's one problem of deception, and there's one problem of you sold him the wrong thing. Okay, next.
Talking about hidden values, the trading card is not-
Yeah, so then the text 3D, this would apply even the other way around, right? Like you mentioned before, this, if, that, that it's not only, uh, not only does it work when, uh, when, when the, when the seller is hiding something from the buyer, the buyer, the buyer is also not allowed to hide something from the seller. I'll read 3D.
Oh, 3D. "If a buyer purchases an item that has a hidden value of which the seller is unaware, like an antique, the buyer must inform the seller that the object is worth more than the average similar object on the market. One must do so, one must do so, um, to the prohibition against deception. Furthermore, it would appear that if the buyer did not inform the seller, the item sold is different than the items, than, uh, the item the seller intended to sell, and the sale can be nullified as a mistaken sale." Rabbi Yochel, uh, Yeshiel Blau?
Yeah, Blau.
Shaila.
Yeshiel Blau.
Would anyone like tea? Put some hot water, if you'd like something.
I'm okay. So, yeah, so it's a two-way deal. Like the, the case you gave before, you go to a, a garage sale, and you thought the card was worth twenty-five cents, you pick it up for a quarter, and you can sell it for, 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 for two hundred dollars. So it would be your obligation to, to, to tell him, it's full, full disclosure, it's from both sides of the street, full disclosure. If, 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 if he's not, if he didn't mean to, to sell you a, a, a two-hundred-dollar card, then, if he, that's not what he meant to sell you, then that's not what you can buy. You can only buy a twenty-five-cent card from him. Interesting exception he makes, that, uh, that the Rebbe Yerich Blau makes, that if the guy knows that he's selling a, a, an antique, for example, he didn't realize this vase is an antique, he thought it's just a vase. But, and, and he sold it, then, then he, you, the, then the, then this buyer would have to tell the seller. What happens if the seller knew that it's an antique? But he thought it's an antique, it's worth a hundred dollars. Really, it's an antique that's worth a thousand dollars. So then what's the deal? So here, he makes an interesting exception. He says, if, if he knew he was selling an antique, then he sold what he was selling. He knew what he was selling, he's, he was selling an antique. So he mispriced it.
So bad, being a bad businessman is not unethical.
It's not a-
It's profitable, but it's not unethical.
Right. So that's, that's an interesting exception. So now, that, that's all the, that, that's these two laws. Next, next law is what we call in Hebrew, onah, price fraud. Let's, uh, uh, read 4A.
"When you make a sale to your fellow, or make a purchase from the hand of your fellow, you shall not wrong one another."
It's not wrong one another, what's called wronging. So the, the Talmud goes ahead and says, what's wronging, 4B.
Let me keep reading.
Yeah, 4.
Okay. Less than a sixth, the scale is binding. More than a sixth, the scale is canceled. A sixth, the scale is binding, and, uh, I don't know how to say that.
Onah.
Onah, as we find it.
Right. So the, the thing was worth sixty dollars, and you sold it for, and he bought it for seventy-one dollars, so it's more than a sixth, then the sale is, is, is null and void. He bought it for a sixth, so then he bought it for seventy dollars, right? A sixth more than the price, up mark of the price. So then the sale is, 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 happens, but you have to return ten dollars, the, the up mark of the price. He sold it for less than seven, it's sixty-nine dollars, so then, uh, it goes, right?
So little legal room here.
It's a little, so, so why are you dealing with ten dollars?
Why'd they pick a six, you know, why six? Why not that?
The, 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 the rabbis, the, 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 the great Amorun, the, the, the rabbis of, of two thousand years ago, they, they, they established that a sixth, up until a sixth, the person will, will forgive.
That percentage of the, of the amount is, is still within, you know, it's still, uh...
No, person will forgive, you know, he's like, hey, he charged me two dollars too much.
It's not worth the whatever.
A six, he won't forgive. And, and, and that's what, that's when it's applicable, what the, what the, what the Torah says, the Bible says, you shouldn't wrong him. After a six, you know, I, I, I grew up in Brooklyn, over there is, there are stores that have no price tags. You drive up in a car, and they're looking out the window, and the guy's driving a Lexus, he's wearing a, this kind of suit, so what do you want? Fifty dollars. Another guy walks in, thirty-five dollars. All right? They say, a joke about, uh, uh, the guy's trying to, at, working at a, at a glasses store, he's, he's training in the new guy. So how do you price up a pair of glasses? Well, he's trying on the glasses, and he seems to like it. So you tell him, it's seventy dollars. If he doesn't flinch, you tell him, that's, that's for the, that's for the frames. For the glass will be, it'll be another fifty. That, that's for the first glass, for the second glass will be an additional fifty. Right? So, uh...
That sounds like deception.
That, that, yeah, that, that is deception, that's not onah. Onah means that we make a, there's a market price. Now, I, I don't know if this is, this applies in America, I don't know if they have a market price, but in, uh, in, in Talmud, it says that, no, there is such a thing as a market price. How do we evaluate the market price? So there are different, many different opinions on how to do it. Probably the most simple way to do it is you take, you may make an average of, one guy charges five hundred, one guy's six hundred, one guy's seven hundred, then the average is six hundred. That's a simple way, and if you make a, and if you deviate a more, a sixth more than six hundred, meaning you deviate seven hundred and one dollars, then the sale is void. This is onah, price fraud. You're marking up the price, price fraud, that's the, that's the problem. So, um...
Sort of like tax, assessing for taxes, right, for market value?
Want to tell a story behind that?
So is that how you-
My brother's scot-free, if it, if it did any deviations, less than a sixth, though.
So is that how you'd translate onah, market value?
Onah, onah means price fraud, marking up from a sixth more than the market value.
You refer to the Talmud.
Fine, so you wanna read, you wanna read 4C? On page eleven.
"The law of onah ha, prohibits an individual from completing a transaction at a price that is more favorable to him than the comparative norm. The law of onah ha validates the complainant's grievance that a better marketplace opportunity was available to him at the time he entered into the transaction. Economists would call the onah ha complaint an opportunity cost claim. The complainant does not lose his right to transact at the market norm, unless we can be certain that he waived his right at the time he entered into the transaction."
All right. So like mekach tot, this one, this, it will apply even to those who, uh, who were committed onah inadvertently. They didn't mean to, he didn't, he wasn't trying to deceive anyone, he thought that this is the market price. And he sold it wholeheartedly. If it was more than the market price, then the sale is null and void, onah, price fraud. So-
You talk about how a competitive market, this won't be a problem, right?
Right, so it's obviously-
Of course, is, that, this is not, you'll always have a market, a price, you have an open competitive market.
Interesting look at the word, the, the chairman of, the chairman of economics at Yeshiva University in thirty years, so he nails what he's talking about.
Right, so, in some-
Not all markets are open and competitive.
Right, and some, in some countries, you're right, in some countries, it won't apply. If, if there is no, uh, it's, this law won't apply if there's no market value. And, and, and I, I don't think American law prohibits you from, from charging whatever you want to market, charge, right? There's an open market, you-
Because it's, it's stable, in a free, in a free market, stable, the, the tendency will be to, if there's full disclosure, right?
Right, so, but, but-
It's stabilized the price.
But the Torah's law says that, no, not unlike American law, the Torah law says that, no, if there is a market, some, some things are no, there is no market value for. I don't know, I don't know the exact example.
Well, there's uncertainty in determined markets.
Right, or maybe like an antique, if there's no, you can't, you can't price, there's no market value. This guy has this antique-
It's impractical to sell this exact technique, antique, many different places to get a, a market price.
Right, so, so in a thing like that, there's no market value, so then onah is inapplicable. In, right, but what happens if a car dealer is way overpricing a dilapidated car? So then what would apply? Would, would mekach tot apply? Mekach tot would apply, right? Because it's, he's, he's selling him a dilapidated car. Would, it's overpriced as, as well, so onah would probably also apply, right? What happens if a flawless item, it's a perfect item, that's overpriced? So then what, what's, what's, what's it called?
Onah.
Onah. And an undisclosed defect in an item that has no set market value. So then mekach tot is applicable, right? Because there is a defect. Because there is a defect. But Onah is not applicable because there's no set market value. So you're not charging more than the market value. What happens if it's an overpriced flawless item that has a set market value? So then because there's no default, so then Meccar taught is not applicable, but Onah is applicable. Charging an exorbitant sum for a flawless item that has no set market price, then neither of them are applicable because there's no set market value. You're selling exactly what you mean to be selling. So then you're good to go, right? So in the case of Cicero's case, in Cicero's house that he was trying to sell. So we already discussed that Meccar taught and Gneva Dat would apply. The question is, would Onah apply?
Well, was he, of course, he's selling his fraudulent house at market value? Or was he...
We don't know.
Well, if he would tell them that there are termites in there, then obviously the market value would...
So yeah, I guess I could see the case for both.
Yeah, you can make the case.
Because if you're passing off something that has serious defects as high quality, you're also, I guess, committing price fraud, really. Because you're giving it an inaccurate overestimation of its true value.
Right? I would say that. And so if there probably, there is, has to be some sort of market value for houses. You know, there's an appraisal that they can come down and appraise your house. And there's a market value for it. So if you're overselling, you're selling more than what a termitid house will be worth, then yes, then it is market, then it is price fraud. It's Onah. And if you're selling more than a sixth, then the sale will be null and void.
Well, this is actually really applicable to the modern economic crisis that we're in, which was partially based on some of these mortgage frauds, then the bundled mortgage frauds, which severely impacted the state of our economy. People were buying into the, you know, these bundled mortgages that they thought was excellent and they were just all worthless.
Correct. So like we discussed before with the stock market, if you don't have, if you don't have open disclosure and you don't, and there's inside trading, then it could ruin the market. So that's one of the problems. But we're discussing more the Torah problems. Isn't, like, I want to point out that some of these problems are not even ethical problems. They're even law problems. They're really legal problems. Like, Onah is a real legal problem. Besides the fact that it's unethical, it's a legal problem. If the house was sold halachically, legally, a Jewish legal, Jewish law, inappropriately, then the house, then the sale is null and void. Even though, you know, whatever, legally, it's a problem more than just ethical. So now, there's can be an exception to the rules you brought up before. Caveat am tor, means that you're going to sell the house as is. I want to, I'm going to say, let's do a deal. I'm selling you this.
It's an old place.
So I'm selling it as is, right? You look into what it is, I'm going to sell it to you and that's it, right? Caveat am tor. So let's see, that might work. Read text 5A.
All stipulations in monetary matters are valid.
All stipulation. Anything that you want to make a condition, it's valid. There are some exceptions to this. Continue reading.
If a person tells a colleague, "We're completing this transaction on the condition that you do not hold me responsible for Onah." The laws of Onah still apply, so you can override that. When is above true? When a statement is made without being explicit. In such an instance, the disadvantaged party does not know the extent of the Onah and therefore cannot properly relinquish its claim. If, however, one is explicit, the laws of Onah do not apply because all the conditions that are accepted by both parties are binding the cases of financial law. For example, if the seller tells the purchaser, "I am aware that this object that I am selling you for 200 zeus is only worth 100. Yet I am selling it to you on the condition that you do not hold me responsible for Onah." The laws of Onah do not apply. Likewise, if the purchaser tells the seller, "I note that this object that I'm buying from you for 100 zeus is worth 200. And I'm purchasing this on the condition you do not hold me responsible for Onah." The laws of Onah do not apply.
So it doesn't always apply. You have to know exactly what you're getting. So returning to Cicero's case with the house, or in our case where you're selling the car, you could tell the guy, listen, I'm selling you the car, look into it and that's it. It won't be enough. Because if the guy, if the buyer doesn't know the problems that he's getting, so then you can't really forgive the problem. You can't really say that, okay, I'll buy it like this. Caveat am tor won't work in this case. Only if you say, there is a problem. The problem is the heater doesn't work, but then that will cost you $1,000 to fix. If you want the car for $2,000, I'll sell it to you. Then that will work. That, such a stipulation, such a condition will work. Okay. So then there's a, we're going to, now this is like some real Talmud, Talmud give and take, what we call in Hebrew, the shaklavat tariya, the give and take, the maybe, maybe no, we can discuss, let's argue it out. Like, was a scholar, someone who sat and studied the Talmud all his life, came, died, and he came up to heaven. And they said, you know, you're such a scholar, maybe you can give us a class. So he said, let me give you a class. You tell me something and I'll refute it. I'll give you 10 refutals. You know, that's the way Talmud scholars always work. One guy said something, the other guy argues. So now we'll discuss from the case of Cicero, another case study from Cicero. Which, basically, in case study three on page 15, it's basically that there was a big food shortage in, you want to say something? A big food shortage in roads. And there was some grain in Alexandria. So a guy is bringing a ship of food over from Alexandria and he's bringing it over to Rhodes. And he knows that, three days behind him, there are other ships coming with grain from Alexandria. So over here, we could also ask the same question. Do I have to disclose? Do I have to tell him that there's more grain coming? Or do I, no, I'm selling grain. This is my grain. You want to buy, buy it for my price or not? Obviously, in a famine, the grain is going to be much higher market value than when it's not a famine. So...
I guess the term is, you have them over a barrel.
I guess.
Having them for, you know, they have to buy what they, right? They have to buy, but whether you're selling a fair price, being on what you know.
So over here also, we have the argument between the same guys, Diogenes and Antipater. And then they stick to their, they hold their guns. Antipater says, you have full disclosure. You have to tell them that your wheat is good, but there's more stuff coming. And Diogenes says, no, you can sell, you're selling wheat? You're selling wheat, that's it. What more do they want?
But if the second ship sinks and the grain doesn't arrive, can the person who had made full disclosure, can he be sued for giving false testimony?
Yeah?
Yeah.
If you, what way is saying?
He didn't intend to deceive. He's saying...
Well, I guess what you'd be doing is you'd be undercutting the value of your current, your current stock.
Yeah, he's fully disclosing, you know, I want to sell you some grain. But, and I say, Danny's coming, so, you know, the value of my grain isn't as much, right? Because if there's more, there's more grain.
But I find a better market.
But let's say, the information I'm giving you is not quite true, right? Or you find a better market.
But over here, you're damaging yourself. You're shooting yourself in the leg.
Right.
What happens if it's a third party? What happens if a third party, that I'm selling, I'm bringing it and I'm not saying anything? He says, I happen to know that there are more ships coming. So then, I think, what you were asking was, this third party, is he going to have to pay me back? And I don't think so, because he didn't lie. He said the truth. There was a ship coming. It's sunk.
There's uncertainty.
So there's no lying, you know? I'm selling my wheat, I'm selling it for 10 times the price that would be in a normal day. He's saying that you don't have, you can only sell for five times the price because there's more ships coming. So then, you know, everyone gains. But the question is, do I have to, me as the owner of this ship, the only ship in town, do I have to say, do I have to disclose that there's other ships coming? Or is it enough to say that, no, you want wheat? I'm selling wheat. Over here, we can understand Diogenes' point of view a little bit stronger, right? Why would you want it? Why would you have to say that there's more ships coming? You're selling wheat, that's what you're selling.
It's irrelevant. It's not exactly like the house.
It's not exactly like the house. Over here, we can relate to Diogenes a little more. So instead of...
This guy may come, he may not come, right?
Well, you say, I'm not talking about the computers.
It's not relevant.
So would Gneva Dat apply? I don't think so. Why not? What does Gneva Dat mean? We said before, if you're selling, you're intentionally selling a deceptive product. A deceptive product, deception. Is there any deception here? In the product you're selling, there's no deception.
No.
I promised you wheat. I sold you wheat. I gave you wheat. There's no deception, right? How about Meccar taught, sale, fraudulent sale? Is this a fraudulent sale? Fraudulent sale? Also not. You wanted wheat, I sold you wheat. How about Onah, marking up the market price? Over here, in a normal day, a bundle, a bushel of wheat might cost $100. Over here, I'm selling it for $1,000. So we might say there's an element of Onah, of price fraud. I'm marking up the market value. I think the truth is in America, I think it is illegal, right? To mark up when, right before the winter in New York and you know there's a blizzard coming and you need to, it's illegal to mark up the market value. But how about according to the Talmud? Would it be illegal? Or you say then, no, the market, I can, the market, right now, I can make the market value. In other words, does the market value go how it is average all year long? Or can I say that right now? Right now, the market value is this, and right now, I'm going to sell it for this.
Because at the time, there are people starving in the streets and they want to buy wheat and they have money.
And it really is worth that amount.
Yeah. So the point is the market value changes.
Supply and demand.
Supply and demand. So that, right, so student, text 16, six, there, you want to read?
With regard to commerce, we do not say that perhaps it is worth so-and-so in another place or that in the future it will be worth such-and-such. We only consider the current time and place.
We were discussing, the market changes.
So the Shulchan Aruch, the code of Jewish law, the main code that we always use to determine our laws, says that, no, it goes at current value, the current place, the current time. We don't have to take in any other factors. You don't have to factor in how it's going to be in a year. You don't have to factor how it is in China. Not to do with the price of cheese in China. Right now, right here, how much does it cost? So that's how, so Meccar taught won't apply in the case of this famine at Rhodes that Cicero is talking about. Meccar taught, a deception, is not applicable. And fraudulent sales also not applicable. And Onah is also not applicable. You're not, the current market value is what you're selling it for. You're not marking up the current market value. There is a little bit of a contradiction over here. Here's where we throw in the curveball, the Talmud curveball. There's a contradiction. The famine at Nahar Da. Nahar Da was one of the famous cities in current day Iraq. The Jews were there way before Iraq, before Saddam Hussein was there. The Talmud was actually written in Iraq.
Babylonian Talmud.
Babylonian Talmud, it was in Iraq. So the famine at Nahar Da, there, and the Talmud says, this text 7A, that there was once a food shortage in Nahar Da. All the people sold their mansions. There was a very rich town. So all the rich people sold their mansions in exchange for food. Eventually, wheat arrived. So Rav Nachman, who was the rabbi in the town, was one of the main rabbis in the Talmud. Rav Nachman said, "The law is that the homes must return to their owners." Why? Because there were cases of mistaken sales. For it is apparent that at the time of the sales, the ships carrying the wheat were standing in the side streams of the river right outside the city, which would seem to imply, not like what we said, right? So the simple way of understanding this Rav Nachman, this passage in Talmud, is that the problem with these, the reason why the mansions, the sale is reversed, is because of price fraud. Now, the rabbi, Aaron David Warman, was, lived about 150, 200 years ago, wrote a famous response on this. He discussed this and he says, no. The problem with, the problem with, in the story of Rav Nachman, was not a problem with price fraud. Price fraud, like we established before from the Shulchan Aruch, from the code of Jewish law, that the problem of price fraud does not apply to, we don't have to take into consideration future prices, prices in other places. The market price is the current market price right over here.
Because in fact, you can't predict the future market price. If you can't, then it would be, but you can't.
Right, you cannot. So, that's right. But he says, well, we'll skip it, we won't read it inside. He doesn't conclude in here. But he says that, what was the problem? The problem is a different, a different, what we call an umdano de mochar. Umdano de mochar means an apparent, apparent situation is set, is very obvious that it was, that this is the reason. A false premise, right? For example, let's read text eight.
If a morbon person deeds all of his property to other people but leaves some land for himself, his gift stands, even if he recovers. If, however, he did not leave any land for himself, the gift is nullified if he recovers. Morbon beings gravely ill, mishna.
So, right, the guy's dying. And people give presents. People give very big presents. So if the guy gave away all his money, then it's very obvious. There's a premise over here, a very obvious premise that what? That he's dying. And the reason why he's giving away all his property is because he's dying. If the guy, if he lives, they promised him that it's cancer. It was really a benign cancer. He lives, right? So then, it was a false premise. He gave away his money, it was a false premise.
Medically, this happens all the time.
What happens if, if he gave away some of his property? A large part, a large amount of his property? So then, we don't say that's a very obvious, the circumstances aren't as, aren't as obvious that he's only giving it away for one reason, right? If he thought he was dying, then he should have given it all away. Why is he holding some back for himself? So we say that, that he gave, why, he's giving a present because he wants to be nice? People do that. People give presents, right? Maybe not such big presents, but over here, he left some for himself. So, in other words, if the umdano means that very clear circumstances, if the umdano means the assessment is very clearly that he's doing it for one reason and one reason only, so then, it's like a condition. It's like a stipulation. And if that condition comes out that it didn't hold water, that he didn't die, so then, then it goes back. So also, in the case of the famine at Nahar Da, these people don't sell their houses. You know, it's like their summer houses, their mansion. They spent five years putting up the building. They're not selling it for nothing. They're living there and they're dying there. Then there's only reason why, the only one reason why they sold it. And that is because they were under the assumption that there's no wheat coming for the next few years. It appeared, obviously, there was wheat coming. So then, it was a false premise that they sold it. It's like it was an open condition. And because it was an open condition, the sale can be reversed. So concluding that Onah, price fraud is only applicable at the current time and the current place. And therefore, in the famine at Rhodes, getting back to Cicero's case, he can mark up the value of the grain coming and he doesn't have to tell them that there's more grain on the way. And it's not a problem. Now, just finish up. There's a couple more reasons why one might have to disclose, why one might have to disclose their business, right? The text over here, and text A and text B, yeah? What page is it on?
19.
19, yeah.[1703.71] So the Torah says, the Bible says, "You shall not see your brother's ox or sheep straying, ignore them. Rather, you should return them to your fellow." So she's a donkey, and so is too, she do his garment, right? There was an obligation to return so-and, so-and. If so-and is gonna lose something, if so-and lost something, then you have to return it to them. Wanna read text A?
One who sees water threatening to flood another's field or destroy another's building must try to stop it. As the verse says, "Any lost article of your fellow." In any instance, that, that one can save another from loss. One must do so with all one's might.
Right? So it's not only to return so-and's, his lost object, it's also to prevent so-and from losing so-and, right? Now, in the case of Rhodes, that, that, over here, might be applicable. Maybe you can prevent these people from having to pay exorbitant amounts of money for, for the grain. You might have to, you might have to tell them that there are more ships coming. Do you? Read text B.
However, one does not need to spend money for this mitzvah unless one knows for sure that the owner of the lost object would be happy to repay him. Hence, the obligation of returning lost objects does not apply to one who will forfeit financial gain by taking the time to return the object.
But the answer is no. Because if you're gonna lose money from it, then, then you don't need to lose money. This is, the mitzvah of returning lost objects, which is a very important mitzvah, doesn't come at your own expense. If, and you know, you're walking through the street, and you see a watch, and you, so you can pick up the watch, and if there, there's signs on it that so-and will be able to claim the watch, then it doesn't cost anything. You maybe have to put an advertisement in the newspaper that you, that you found the watch. So the guy will have to pay back the $10 that it costs to put it in the classifieds, if the watch is worth more than $10. But you don't have to lose your money. If you, if you, you don't have to spend time. You could've gone to your job and involved yourself in returning the object. Also, over here, if you could make money by, by marking up the price, so then you don't have to mark down the price because they're gonna lose. Because I'm gonna lose if I mark down the price. So you don't have to. So conclusion from this is that, that we would, that, that, oh no, will not apply at all, and hashavat avedah, returning the lost object, won't either apply. So, let's see, what does Cicero conclude? Text nine.
I believe then, that the corn merchant ought not to have concealed the facts from the Rhodians, Rhodians. And the man who was selling the house should not have withheld its defects from the purchaser. Holding things back does not always amount to concealment, but it does when you want people for your own profit to be kept in the dark about something that you know and would be useful for them to know. Anyone can see the sort of concealment that this amounts to and the sort of person who practices it. He is the reverse of open, straightforward, fair, and honest. He is shifty, deep, artful, treacherous, malevolent, underhanded, sly, habitual road.
Wow.
Surely, one does not derive advantages, advantage from earning all those names and maybe more besides.
So Cicero, and a lot of people, will throw these two cases together, right? Either it's full disclosure versus saying, hiding what you want. But we, but what we've, what we have concluded from, from Jewish laws, that no, they're very, very different in principle. In one case, you're selling him a defaulted, a defaulted product. It's faulty. It's a problem. It's defective. There's a problem with it. Over there, you have to tell them the problem. If there's no problem with it, and it's just that you can make more money or you cannot make more money, so then you don't have to disclose. Over there, full disclosure is unnecessary. So most common sense would put them together, but we see that, no. Torah, Torah's principle says, it's not the way to think about things. Think about things if you take it through a step-by-step process and analyze, am I selling him what I promised to sell him? Am I trying to wrong him? Am I, am I marking up more than I, more than the market value? And, and, and do I have to prevent him from a loss? If you, take, take into account all these different factors, then you could say that they're very different cases. Over there, I'm selling him a faulty product. Over there, I'm selling him a perfect product. So now, getting back to the insider trading with Martha Stewart. Over here, it might get touchy. People, you know, let's take the case of Guneva, Guneva dot, deception. The theft of mind deception. Definition is selling a blemished item with the intention of fooling the customer. The ruling is, first of all, it's forbidden. Second of all, the sale is nullified, nullified. So the question is, does it apply to insider trading?
I would say yes.
I would say yes, right? She knew that the, that is gonna go down by 90%, and then she was selling a very, very faulty product. I might argue. This would be an obvious conclusion, right? I, I can play devil's advocate, and I can say that, no. What she was selling, what so-and's selling when they know inside information, they're selling exactly what they promised to be selling. I'm selling you a stock, a stock in Imklon. You want it, you don't want it. Furthermore, this buyer, if he's pursuing Imklon's stock, then he'll try to go elsewhere to buy Imklon's stock.
It's also, there's a perception of some high technology, that it's a risky business venture, that you win big, you lose big.
Furthermore, correct. Another, another curveball. People know that there's a risk. So, so, so you say, you buy, you know, you know what you're buying. You're buying a risk. I might say that, no. The, it can still account to mekartot, right? Mistaken sale. Is the selling, if it's selling a blemished item, even if inadvertently, and the sale is nullified. Right? Now, this would be very interesting. What, suppose someone, besides Martha Stewart, is also selling Imklon's stock. They sold $10,000 worth. The sale is nullified, even if it was inadvertent, right? Now, Jewish law might say that you sold the $10,000 stock the same day as Martha Stewart, your sale is also null. Your sale, it's interesting, it's void. It's nullified sale. Why? Because you sold, you sold something that was, it was, you sold something on the premise that it's... Now, what happens if the company, right? What happens if the company was burnt down to the ground? Obviously, the company is worthless. So you can, you can try to differentiate between the stock, which is the ownership of the company, and the value of the company, right? The value, I'm selling you the stock, whereas the company, well, I don't care about the company. I'm selling you the value of the stock. You can try to differentiate, or you can say that, no. If the company would burn down to the ground, there is no company. So then, so then, you know, the stock is worthless, so then you're selling a fake, a fake stock. Or you can say that, no, the stock is a stock. Two, you can, you can try to apply it, you can try not to apply it. It's up for debate. A lot, a lot, there's a lot of, a lot of arguments about this law. How exactly does it apply? Is it wrong? Is it right? Oh no, price fraud. Deviation, definition is deviation in price from the market norm. So if the deviation is 1/6, restitution must be made. If deviation is over 1/6, the sale must be nullified. Does that apply to insider trading? It might. Probably not. It's hard to imagine, right? You're selling it at the market price. You're not, you're not, this is the current market price. That's, for sure, the current market price is. The day she sold it was worth $50 a share. It wasn't worth $6 a share.
It's more commonly used for, you know, it's regular goods.
Right. Goods. Cars, houses. A clear assessment, with the definition, that actions and circumstances indicate that a transaction was made with a tacit condition. And the ruling would be if the, if the condition is not fulfilled, then the transaction is nullified. Also, over here, it's probably not. It probably wouldn't be relevant. And hashavat avedah means returning of lost object. Definition would be preventing any pecuniary, I don't know how to pronounce it, one pecuniary loss to another. Pecuniary, whatever. And the rule would be if the obligation to do so unless there will be a financial loss. Also, over here, probably not. Maybe you can argue that if she knows it's going down, but it's coming at her own expense. So there probably wouldn't be a problem. So that's that. The Torah's view, it's like, it's very different. The Torah's view on such, on such object, on such areas, you know, is vastly different than what we're used to thinking. It's like you said, so you could say that some market regulations is not really such an American concept, not such capitalism. But the Torah's view is not capitalism. It's not. It's a little bit of everything.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you all.
Good job. Yes, for core.
Thank you all for being here.
For a while, and I'm also impressed.
Well, no, you remind me a lot of, we've seen Rabbi Hanis come down and give him presentations just right, right over there. And so he's teaching JLI courses, so, good job.
It's right up the same alley, huh?
Yeah, no, you, you, whatever congregation you end up being assigned, is, they're pretty lucky.
I'm flattered.
Thank, thank you all for coming. It's a small club, but it's a nice, a nice little group.
Hopefully, it's good to get like...